And welcome to the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. Could we please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Once again. Once again, welcome to the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of each month. I'd like to introduce the board. To your far right is Mr. Edward de Jesus. And then we have Rachel Bruce. We have Mr. Craig Brady. To your far left is our attorney, Kelly Naughton. I'm Karen Unger, and our recording secretary is way back there. That's Jess McLennan. Oh, by the way, our next meeting will be... I didn't put the date. Oh, yeah, March 8th. March 8th. So it's always the second Wednesday, and we assume that it'll be in person again unless the pandemic hits us. Okay, let's look at the agenda. First on the agenda is executive session. We have none this evening. Approval and acceptance of previous minutes. Did everyone read the minutes from January?
Motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I meant it's been accepted. No business, we have none, no actions on decisions, and so we will start with our public hearings. The first one is the Woodbury Townhouses. The applicant has requested a postponement till April. They're waiting for the planning board to make a decision on their secret, authoritative declaration. So do I have a motion from the board to carry this over to April, which would be April 12th?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, sure.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second on the agenda is Simka, Two First Avenue, continuation of public hearing requesting a variance for modifications to an existing seasonal, single-family dwelling, including the construction of a second-story addition and the conversion of the dwelling to year-round use with less than the required acreage and which does not meet the front, side, or rear yard setbacks. Whereas pursuant to section 310-26, the lot must meet the development standards provided for a single-family dwelling permitted in the district. And whereas pursuant to section 310-43.2, non-conforming buildings may be remodeled or reconstructed, provided that such action does not create any new non-compliance or increase in the degree of non-compliance. Said property is in the R2A zoning district on the corner of First Avenue and Scunnamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 214, block 6, lot 5. Is the applicant present?
Maybe wait.
Yeah, we'll wait to the... Yeah, we'll go to the next application. Do I need to promote for that?
No.
Okay.
But you won't have to reread everything.
Okay. Next on the agenda. I hope I say this right. Actus, Unit 3B, continuation of public hearing requesting a variance for the construction of an addition to an existing seasonal, single-family dwelling, number 3B. Whereas pursuant to section 310-43.2, letter C, non-conforming uses may be expanded by up to 10% of the floor area of the principal structure, subject to a special permit and certain findings of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Said property is located in the R3A zoning district along Scunnamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 213, block 1, lot 1.11. Is the applicant present? Are you the applicant for this application? Yes.
What's the address?
Oh, what's the address? It's... I don't have the address. It's Unit 3B in the... 3B.
Actus.
Actus, yes.
Actus, yeah. Okay. So last time, when we met, we had plans in front of us, but we couldn't read them. So you gave us...
Yes, good evening.
Yeah, you gave...
Larry Hartman from Hartman Design. Yes, last, last time, yes, we submitted, the dimensions and all the text were not clear. It was impossible actually to read it. We submitted new plans showing all the dimensions clearly. Also, you asked for a footprint and an overall showing what's existing, what's new, what's going to be removed, which I did in the first sheet. So basically, if you look at the proposed, at the proposed addition, so we're just going to fill in that little void on the rear left corner. They originally started an addition along the whole side, which is going to be removed because you cannot do more than 10%. So half of it is going to be removed, the other half, the floor, is going to become like a wraparound deck. I also added the square footage, showing that it's less than 10%. And I did put a dimension to the next building. So basically, we're not going to get any closer to the neighboring building from what we are right now. We're basically just going to keep and going to be aligned with the left side wall and continue all the way to the rear. That's, that's the second sheet. That's the first sheet. Second sheet gives you just a detailed floor plan. Basically, what we're doing, we're doing that 18-foot-two by 8-foot-two addition. Okay, we're just removing those extra wall to make it into one, like, to combine it with the area next to it, so it becomes a bedroom. Sheet number three shows the proposed, how it's going to look from the outside. They're also going to raise the roof, they're also going to raise the roof slightly, so that's how it's going to look from the outside. And page number four, we're showing the left and right elevation. So the left and rear. And I believe that's it.
Thank you. There's nothing else that will change, correct? In other words, you're taking off that side addition, keeping the rear side, the rear corner?
Yeah, so basically...
That leaves you with the 9.6%?
Yeah.
The 1687 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? You do?
So you just said that this was going to be for an additional bedroom. How does that... How do you get water now?
No, it has an existing bedroom.
It has an existing...
It has now two bedrooms.
Okay.
We're just rearranging the space. The master bedroom becomes now a little bit of a bigger bedroom, and that area becomes, part of it becomes the second bedroom because we kind of...
So you're just basically giving each bedroom...
Yeah, more space.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. Are there any bulk requirements? Because it's a non-conforming bulk.
No, they would be fine there. They just, it would just have to be conditioned on confirming that they are exempt from the moratorium for the water.
Okay.
And they have to submit the projected water form to the building department for the sewer administrator's line up.
Did you get that?
Yes.
He's done it a few times.
Oh, okay. All right.
It was loud enough that I could hear.
Okay. Board, does no more questions? No questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Rachel?
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this application? No? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. You may stay for the remainder of the evening, and we will discuss. Or you can call the building department in the morning. You can leave now. Call the building department in the morning, and they'll let you know what the decision is. Oh, my... Oh, maybe. Yes. Yeah, I will ask him. Are you also here for Two First, for Two First... Okay. Because we skipped over that.
And those...
That was, that was...
You were.
You were.
They postponed.
Yeah, they postponed, so what happened was you became first. Okay. So we're, we're going to go with that application right now. So we're back to the, the second one rather than bring it to the end. Let me get my papers in order here. So you want to represent this applicant, correct, Mr. Hartman? This, this is where you want to convert that seasonal dwelling to year-round use, correct?
Correct.
And you want to add a second story, and the basement is already there, you said last time?
Yes.
Okay. You need... You're requesting variances or, you know, you have, don't have the required acreage or the setbacks. We've gone over most of that stuff last time, and now we have these plans that you gave us from January, with the last ones, I believe, were from November.
Correct. Also, the last one, there was some text that you couldn't read also. There wasn't... And also, you asked for a site plan, basically not just the architectural plans, which we submitted on the first sheet. So basically, they're going to add, they're proposing to add, fill in that void in the front, do an addition at the rear, and two new decks on the two sides. And additionally, a driveway, which they currently have kind of a gravel, kind of another private driveway, and the walkways to those, to the front, which they currently have, which leads straight to the road, but we want to remove that and just lead it to the driveway. I don't know if it's hard to see in the dash. They have kind of a stoop and a, and a walkway, says concrete walk all the way, all the way through the front, which they want to eliminate that and just have it to the driveway. On the bottom, on the bottom right corner, there's the bulk requirements. So minimum lot area is existing. This, this is just .2242 of an acre, but it's not, but it's consistent with the entire area in that area. This was before.
Right, it's a pre-existing.
Yeah, pre-existing. Lot width is same problem. Today, we, we need to have 175. When this was created, it was only 100. Front yard is 40, existing is 33. We're not going to come out in the front any more than what it is, but it is also non-conforming. Existing is non-conforming. Same goes to the minimum front yard to Scunnamunk. It's also existing is 40. We are now at 32.84, but we're also not going to add to that, to the 32.84. Minimum side yard is 30, and we are now at 22.68. We're going to stay the way it is. It's also non-conforming. Minimum both sides, it's the same thing, non-conforming. The only thing that we're going to need, that we're kind of making it worse for what it is, is the front, is the minimum rear yard, where it's asked, where it's proposed, where it's required to be 50, existing is 30.25, and 17.9 is what we're proposing. Now, the reason we're doing this shape is now there is an existing shed kind of in the back, and we're just... Also, there was an original permit for this, like, for nine, in back, I think in 2019, for this decks and all of that, so they're keeping. That's why they're doing that box in the back.
For that, where the mechanical room and the office are going to be?
Yeah. Now, now there's no office, now there's just a mechanical. Now there's like a box outside mechanical, not an inside, not an inside room.
Right, that's...
Yeah. That's the mechanical in the office. And obviously, the lot coverage is also non-compliant. The lot coverage is 20. Actually, it is existing 16.1, and the proposed is 23.5. Now, the building height is 35, which we're going to comply. That's the first sheet. The next sheet is basically showing the existing.
Was that a duplex?
One second, let me see.
Maybe it's not that page. Yeah. Was that a duplex? Because you've got two kitchens, two master bedrooms, and two second bedrooms.
Originally?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm looking at here. Second page. Yeah. I'm just curious.
Second page?
Yeah.
Basement floor?
X, EX-101?
Yeah, 101, okay.
In the top-left corner?
Oh, that's existing now. Exist...
Right.
It is a duplex, but...
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah. It is two-family, but it's non-conforming. If we, if we keep it on two-family, it's going to be non-conforming, which we fall in again at that 10% issue. But they're going to remove that two-family and just have one.
Make it single-family. Are you, are they planning to demolish it and rebuild? Or do, fix up that...
That's the... The owner kind of thought he might be able to keep it. I don't think he'll be able to do that. And I would want him to kind of not build on top of the existing foundation, just keep the same footprint, but do it from scratch.
Will that affect anything?
Not a conversion.
To tear down and rebuild? We're just trying to keep what's there.
Originally, that's what he wanted, but I don't know if that's ideal. I don't know if I'm kind of happy to build on top of something old. Does it make a difference as for zoning purposes and...
Well, it might, depending on non-conformities, and you're completely demolishing it, and then you lose any vested interest into those non-conformities. Just something for me to look at, too.
Again, if we have, if, again, if we, if we're going to have to keep it, we'll keep it. That's what he wants, and I guess we're going to keep it. But if we can, I would push to remove it. But again, it's up to, if you could do this research on that, I mean, great.
The addition to the, on the first page, you know, in the front there, it says new addition. Is that a single level, or will that be two stories high?
That will be...
Is that patio area that it's supposed to be?
That will be... You mean the front?
Yes.
Yeah, that will be that little, then, that they're filling in, they're going to be all the way up.
It'll be all the way up.
All the way up. So if you take a look at the front elevation, you'll be able to see it, that it'll be all the way up.
Okay. Now, you say you have permits for those decks?
Now, that, that's why they originally kept, and for the decks, yeah, we do have, I don't know. Let me take a look at it.
But they were never built, you're saying?
They were never built, no. So... They were never built. So basically, we're basically, I just, I just said why we came up onto this kind of weird addition, why they just don't add whole back, just one room in the back, is because that's how it was originally proposed. But it doesn't really matter, I think, at this point.
My concern with those decks is that you're adding, increasing the non-compliance.
With the...
With the, with the, well, with setbacks, coverage. I don't know, does that count for coverage decks?
Usually, they, they do, because it is still in purpose.
Perfect, yeah.
But it does increase the...
Non-compliance, yeah.
Now, we did get, yeah, to see that. Permit number 21, it's 2021, actually.
Yeah?
This was basically proposed, that... This was proposed, two decks, with this. We got a plan approved, as noted, permit 214642. That was, yes, in May.
And that was when it was a seasonal dwelling?
Were they constructed?
No, they're not there.
Is that approval still valid?
I'm not, no. Again, we're not going based on this.
Okay.
I'm just showing again for the board why. So this was then what was proposed, so basically...
Yeah.
But this was never done. So this was an application, and this was the staff.
Okay. Apparently, it was okay because it never came before us, you know?
It could have been done in error.
We'll have to check that out.
You said that that was 2021?
Looks to me the date is, yeah, April 12, no, May 12, 2021.
Thank you.
I have a question, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Why there are eight bathrooms for a single-family home?
Let me take a look at that.
Or maybe I counted wrong.
This is the wrong one, sorry. So the basement has two bathrooms.
There's three here.
Three, four, five. Basically, again, the top one has, the top floor is going to be bedrooms. And I believe every room has a bedroom besides one. The basement has also bedrooms, so that's why they need additional two. Has two, no, has the study, the gym, again, that's for the second floor. And the middle floor, again, it sounds a little bit a lot, but I guess that's, they're basically, the owner, that's his second home. I believe he uses it where he gets his married kids, and he wants them to have a separate bathroom. It does, it is a lot.
Do they have a sewer and water there? Or is that well in septic?
I believe they do. That's a question that I'm not going to be able to answer, but I do believe this area does have water, sewer. Yeah, I think so.
Board have any questions? No?
I have a thousand questions, but I think it all boils down to the question on demolition and the legality and the code that applies. So I'm not going to ask a thousand questions, or even 10, because it hinges on that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I just was curious, you know? When I went to visit the site, like you said, it is, seems to be an old structure. Doesn't seem like it was maintained in pristine condition for a while. So I was, you know, concerned.
That's why they want to rebuild it. I think it's going to just, sitting like that is not the best thing for the neighborhood, you know, a dilapidated...
Is it structurally sound?
The foundation can be structurally sound. And if there's a place or two where they find, they can make it, they can make sure it's structurally sound. So that's why he was thinking, why excavate the whole area, new, you know, foundation evolves, excavating, putting soil back, footing drains, all of that. So he wanted to keep the foundation and just go from there on. As, from an architecture point of view, you don't care as much as the money, and I want to have it, I want to remove it, and you think it makes sense. From an honest point of view, he wants to save it. So that's basically where we're still debating, but if we can, we're definitely going to keep it.
And where are you with the water and sewer department in regards to the water moratorium with the addition of the four bedrooms? Have you spoken to them? I know, I haven't seen an application, but with the board trustees coming in.
I'm going to take a look at that. So originally, so originally, it has four bedrooms, two units, each a two-bedroom unit. And we are proposing the four bedrooms. Does it, if we're proposing four bedrooms, where does it fall into? I see originally it has two.
Four bedrooms, I thought you said that there was one bathroom for, so you have...
Oh, so the bathroom that...
Well, no, it's, it's based on bedroom count, but now I'm concerned because I thought you said that there was enough, every bedroom had a bathroom. There's twice the number of bathrooms in the house than there are bedrooms.
Okay. So you want me to file with the water, with the water department?
Yes, the protected water and sewer demand.
Okay.
Just so that they can review it as well, and if, if it's good, submit it to this board, and it can move forward. If you need a hardship waiver, you've seen that before, to the board trustees, just to wrap that issue up.
Correct. Makes sense.
Does the board have any questions before I open it up to the public? Do I have a motion to open this to the public for a public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there anyone from the... Excuse me, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this application?
I have a question.
Please go to the, could you go to the podium and state your name, please?
My name's Tom Powell, I live on Oakland Avenue.
Wait a minute.
My name's Tom Powell, I live on Oakland Avenue. My question is, is this a duplex or a single-family home?
It will become a single-family home.
Okay, because the wording that was coming, that I was listening, that was a little confusing.
It's an existing seasonal duplex, which will become a year-round, single-family home. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Do I have a motion to carry this over to next month?
I'll make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll carry this over. Oh, there you are.
March 8.
Yes, March 8. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have 50 Smith-Clove LLC Public Hearing for the conversion of an existing laundromat to residential apartments. Whereas pursuant to sections 310-6F and 310-7, the proposed conversion requires 22,000 square feet of lot area, where 11,753.3 square feet are provided. And whereas pursuant to sections 310-6 and 310-42A, 10 parking spaces are required for both uses, where six are provided. And whereas pursuant to section 310-40, no off-street parking shall be permitted within a required front yard in any district, and parking is proposed within the front yard. And whereas pursuant to section 310-42E2, for parking areas with 10 spaces or fewer, driveways are required to be 10 feet wide, 10 feet wide per lane, and where is a total of 10.8 feet is provided. Said property is located in the HB zoning district along Smith-Clove Road in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 231, block 3, lot 3. And I see the applicant is present. Please state your name and...
Hi, my name is David Nimatko, we're the design professional firm representing this project. It's good to see everyone in person and in good health, and it's been a while. I see some new members also, so I look forward to working with you. So this project is an existing structure, as mentioned, at 50 Smith-Clove Road. The, it's a one-story structure that houses, used to house a laundromat on the first floor. The owner would like to convert that laundromat to a two-apartment facility. The owner would like to convert that laundromat to a two-apartment facility.
There's a bit of a discrepancy there because in some places you say two apartments, but on the, one of these pages, it says four units. And then in the diagram, it says two, two units, and it has an arrow to an existing apartment. So is it two, three, four, like how many apartments?
I'm sure the owner would like four, but where, where, so that's an interesting question, Karen. The, that existing laundromat floor apparently had an apartment in it. Not, the whole place has been gutted, so I'm not sure if it was codified or not at some point in time. So our application is asking for two apartments in substitution of that first floor.
So two, so it's a single-story? And you want to keep it a single-story?
Yes, we're not changing.
And make two apartments within that laundromat?
Correct.
Not four?
Correct.
Or three?
Not four, not three.
Because, it says that you want to keep one of those, yeah, on the C2. It says proposed one-story residential apartments, two units. And then on the side, it says one existing apartment to remain. Now, does that, one apartment included in the two?
Yes. So it'd be two total.
Yeah, on the other side of the same page, it says project description, and it says, existing laundromat to be converted to residential apartments, existing apartment from laundromat to remain, four apartment units proposed.
Or someone in my.
In other words, the number of apartments will affect the parking spaces, the square foot, you know, it'll affect almost everything.
Sure. So just for clarity, again, we're only, we're asking for two apartments.
Okay.
And that laundromat floor.
Okay.
First floor.
And the single-family dwelling that's next door?
Correct.
Is going to remain as a single-family dwelling?
Correct, yes, we're not, we're not proposing any changes in footprint and no additions to the building or buildings. We have been before the planning board twice to go through a technical review. I believe you have the latest comments from H2M that was submitted along with our package. We listed in the cover letter. So we're at a point with the technical review with the planning board that some of the logistics of the site and zoning would need to be addressed. There are pre-existing non-conforming conditions that there's nothing we can do about regarding the lot area and the setback requirements, how the building affects that. So we would ask that the zoning board recognize those pre-existing non-conforming conditions and use this opportunity to codify that project.
Whereas you're going to keep the same footprint, correct?
Same footprint.
And you're not demolishing the building, you're just re-invaluing what's inside?
Correct, it's all interior renovation. Which actually reduces the water demand, the sewer demand from a laundromat to a.
So the public hearing says that you would need 10 spaces, but you don't need 10 spaces. You only need the six if you're only having two units. You need two spaces for each unit.
Correct.
So that would be four spaces, and then the single-family home needs two spaces. So that would be six, is that why it's only six that are proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Even though we do show eight.
You'd show another area for parking.
Towards the, well, plan, the south side of the plan, we showed two additional parking spaces that could be used on the lower side of the one-story building.
Is that the lower right-hand corner?
Correct.
And then you have parking space with no striping or impacts? And that's on the left side, on the northwest side of the.
Yeah, that was, that was as a result of the evolution process with the planning board, not to have striping and things of that nature because of its proximity to the creek and other considerations.
So where is the part about the front yard parking? Where is the front yard parking?
Well, that's, that's an interesting thought because we did find some caveats in the zoning code that we listed with maximum front setback on C2. So, you know, I welcome the attorney's thoughts on this, but right now we have 25 feet from the edge of curb of sidewalk to the first, I mean, to the front yard setback. And then that's 10 feet from the curb cut that exists. So that first parking space would have an overlap according to the zoning code of a few feet.
So I can address some of this to the board. The public hearing notes that went out was based on the initial submission, and then when we delve further into the review of the application, there are several inconsistencies that Chairwoman has raised. One thing that came to light was this plan is different than what was provided to the planning board. So the planning board engineer wrote the referral, and this plan had been modified. So if you look at page C2, and you'll see right near the road where it measures the 10 feet to the edge of the parking, first parking space, that was previously within the setback area, which had been noted in the planning board's plans as 30 feet. So the 25 feet is consistent with the building inspector's determination that the R-025A bulk requirements do apply to this in the HB district. But previously, it was listed as 30 feet, so it showed the parking space within the front yard. And there's, there's a couple of inconsistencies that, that you do need clarification on tonight that the applicant is telling us, so that those, you can make sure that you're considering the correct.
So is, is that first parking spot partly in the front yard then?
Yes.
Okay. But the rest are.
Beyond, beyond the 25 feet.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
And, you know, of course, we would be happy to take the time to clarify things and make a consistent presentation or documentation to the board.
You, go ahead.
I think that one only applies to the front yard.
Yeah, but you have that driveway back there that's supposedly too lame, and it's 10.8 feet at that corner. I would be cons, I'm not sure where this goes.
Yeah, we, we were.
Needs to be widened because you need 10 feet for each side.
Yeah, that would be difficult to do on the site, to widen it, widen the drive to 20 feet and keep the parking spaces that are demonstrated on the plan. It is interesting to note that there is public parking on Valley Avenue, according to our research, apparently it's owned by the village, which is about 150 feet away from the site. And I believe there is street parking along Falkirk Avenue, even though it's a dead end. So the board could take into consideration that some parking that may be required could be done off-site. The facility is close to 32, close to Bus Route, easy access, easy pedestrian access. I mean, not all individuals may have two cars. You know, some families may just have one or none. But yet, this area seems to be tailored or at least conducive to a residential application since it does have excellent pedestrian traffic or pedestrian access to 32 and the shops and things along there. So I would, you know, hope the board would weigh that factor within their consideration.
So you're saying overflow parking would be on Valley Avenue, under the train tracks? Other side of the train tracks?
It's quite a distance.
It's 150 feet.
Well, if it was raining and I lived in an apartment, I wouldn't want to walk that far.
So it was surprising.
I know apartment building way after Brooklyn football field, so.
It was surprising to us to note, I mean, if our research is correct, that that parking area is all public parking.
Understood, yeah, no, I'm saying, is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to place Valley Avenue and make sure I'm referring to the right place. So it's under the train tracks on the other side.
Under the, if we're leaving the site, under the train tracks at the left.
That's correct, okay, just wanted to make sure we're on the same page, thank you.
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, Woodbury Creek, you can't, they can't.
Yeah, I know that.
They can't.
Yeah.
Can't move that.
There's nothing there, that's just not going to happen, so.
When it was a laundromat, did it have any parking there?
Excuse me?
They had muddy parking lot in the back.
Was there site parking on site?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, that area that's shown to the plan left had, was, was used as a parking area. Right now, the plan just delineates it, you know, but if it was used that way or not, we just don't know.
Now, the parking, oh, go ahead.
You're going to say what I was going to say, please.
The parking for the laundromat used to be in the back, and it was always muddy, it wasn't paved.
In the back?
In the back.
Behind, behind the one-story building?
Behind both buildings, effectively down Falkirk.
Oh, really?
Went down Falkirk and behind the building.
Oh, okay. Oh, around the corner?
Yeah, you had to go, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
So you had to go down Falkirk, this is Smith-Clove, you came down Falkirk to the back of the building. And you crossed this little wooden, make any bridge to go into the laundromat from the back.
And it was so muddy.
I, I did not know that.
Or you double parked and took your chances on Smith-Clove Road, which nowadays, nobody would want to do.
Unless it dries dry very quickly, right? So you could run in there, get them dry for 15 minutes and run out.
So we are doing two units in the laundromat.
Correct.
Keeping the one family home as a single-family home.
Correct.
Six parking spaces.
That would be fantastic, yes.
My biggest concern is the driveway at this point and the parking, you know.
What driveway are you talking about?
Here.
Supposed to be when you drive.
10 feet for each side, yeah.
And around, it's supposed to be two lanes.
So are you proposing the driveway goes all the way around the entire building and behind both?
Well, quite honestly, I'd like to leave the driveway and parking to plan left, you know, it's shown to the left of the building. However, we do note that there is a 12-foot clearance between the corner of the building and the property line that would allow a car to access two parking spaces behind the right building.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase the question, because I don't, I see the two spots that you, that's a, right, that's, that's your note two?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm basically asking is, are you proposing, or is it true that today, this driveway where the parking is goes all the way around behind and goes to Falkirk? Or are you proposing that?
I, you know what, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I'm not sure of the connection between the back of this lot and Falkirk, Falkirk Road, or Falkirk Avenue.
There's just the driveway from here.
We would have to give further definition.
Right, but I've seen, what I'm saying is, I don't think that goes all the way back now.
Oh, it doesn't go to the back of the building?
I don't believe that that goes all the way to the back of the building. Around behind both structures is what I'm trying to say.
I mean, right, right now, it shows a stone garage on another person's property, which to me would seem to block access from Falkirk Avenue onto the site.
Correct, so those two additional parking spaces, I'm questioning how you get to them as well, but that's neither here nor there if you don't need them for the six.
Oh, that, that would be wonderful.
Right, I mean, if that's where we're trying to getting at.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, it's now, and I don't know if one car was coming and one was going, I mean.
What I'm saying is, I believe that right now, this has some barrier, whether it's vegetation, stone, or otherwise. That this is, yes, that this is not all the way through. That's my recollection.
It's a Google image, does that match your recollection?
He told me there'd be no picture.
Sorry, no pictures.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Oh, it's not touchscreen, except. It's a mag, your little paw prints.
Yeah, somehow I have to, I have to gear my brain into what kind of a computer.
I just did a Google image, and I put the little yellow man on the road. So he's looking into the driveway.
It's street view on Google.
Okay.
Everybody want to see it, there you go, street view on Google. So, it, it terminates, it's not, it doesn't go all the way around. If you're thinking this is a driveway around, it's not. This terminates.
But he's proposing a driveway now.
I don't know.
No, no.
No?
You mean from Smith-Clove around the buildings onto Falkirk?
No, driveway to the back two parking spaces, he's saying it doesn't exist right now. So you're proposing the driveway to continue to the back two parking spaces?
If the zoning board would allow a 12-foot wide access to those two spaces, then yes.
Okay, because you, you also don't comply with the 10.8, that's by the six apartment.
Correct, no, we realize that, yes.
Did you want to see this, or you can pull it up on?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
So we're saying, A, how many spots does he need? It sounds like six.
Yes, he's required to have six.
Required to have six, the six are accomplished here, so the two become moot.
Well, if he can get to the two, he could take two here and make this wider.
Well, if he's going to use the two in the back at all, he, if he goes back to the planning board, that 12 feet, he would need a variance for that. If he's going to disregard that, then.
We, we all referring to the 12 feet between the corner of the building and the property line, right?
Right.
Well, yes, but we're referring to the 10.8 feet between the edge of the creek and the edge of the last parking spot.
Correct, yes, I understand.
That's really the one that I think is.
Then he could slide these down, if he did four there, two there, slide that down, that would make that wider here. Here it would, nothing would be affected, but it's still larger than that. And if there's only two spaces here, only be two cars?
Well.
Any other questions?
I'm not in favor of those two spots at all. This is the edge of that building. We're talking, I'm trying to get it out, are you going to do it and back it out the way around?
Any other questions from the board? No?
So what exactly are the variances that we have to do?
So that letter is incorrect. I think we need to make a submission that discusses what we, with the board's draft.
So Kelly, what did you take away? What, what do you see as the variances?
I see the minimum lot area is the variance, the, one of the parking stall that's located within the front yard is a variance, and the 10-foot wide driveway as a variance.
And that's the curb cut, effectively what we're talking about?
That's, yes, the curb cut going around.
Okay.
Because I think when, when he clarified the number of apartments, that reduced it to the six.
Right.
Because we were at six, and it actually also impacted your minimum lot area because you were asking for 34,000. 34,000 square feet, when you actually only require 22,000 square feet based on the number of units. So, somebody's math was, in your office, was off. Somebody, somebody got their math wrong. So, so I don't think.
Somebody in my office is gonna get a beating. And it might actually be me.
We don't know who's there. You just, you just blame that on somebody.
Thank you.
So I think the cover letter that the board should not look to right now, because I don't think that that's accurate, but it would have to be considered based on the representations the applicant's making tonight, and I think a further submission just to clarify specifically their request to be held before.
Okay.
In case there's any that, that we missed in our review as well.
Oh, we agree. I agree, absolutely.
Anything to add? You have anything to add?
Uh, no.
Okay, do I have a motion to open this to the public?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this application? Okay.
Motion to carry over to the March eighth meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see you next month?
Are you gonna close the public hearing?
No.
Are you gonna keep it over? You're holding it over to March?
Yes.
So, thank you very much for your consideration, board members. So, will we be getting, will Kelly in my office be in communication prior to that, or?
Yeah, I can certainly send you what I just referenced to the board is what I think the variances are that are needed.
Sure.
And I can also refer back to the email from, the memo from H2M.
Yes.
And then some of the discrepancies that the chairman pointed out tonight, so that we can have one comprehensive application material submission for the board to consider next time.
You have my bad phone number, so call at any time, or email. Have a good evening, everyone. We look forward to getting your correspondence, okay?
Thank you. Night. And we will continue public hearing. Public hearing, Welner, for the construction of a 10-by-16 storage shed in the front yard. Whereas pursuant to Section 310-11, accessory buildings may be permitted only in a rear yard, and whereas pursuant to Section 310-12(c)(3), any required yard shall be open space and entirely free of buildings other than a detached accessory building, occupying not more than 25% of a required yard, and setback from any lot line one-half the height of such accessory building, but in no case less than six feet. Said property is located in the art, quarter-acre zoning district along Park Avenue in Highland Mills, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 220, Block 3, Lot 24. And I see the applicant is present. Could you state your name, please?
Jordan Welner.
You can take that out if you don't want to.
Yeah, if you don't want to. So basically, what you want to do is build a 10-by-16 shed. Any reason it can't be in the back?
Uh, yes, so the main reason for us is, this, the shed would be, you know, sorry, I have this kind of written down, but our primary residence has, like, very limited storage. We have no garage, basement, or attic. So, the purpose of the shed being in the front yard, or in the front, would be for its intended use, including access to utilities like snow blower, lawn, lawnmower, tools for the car, and extra storage. We're also, I just want to point out to the board that this, this lot is a flag lot, so the variance would have, in, in our opinion, would have a little impact on the character of the neighborhood and the, and the, it actually faces the backyards of our closest neighbors, the front yard, where we're proposing to put the shed.
So that would be like at the end of the driveway there?
Yep, so if you look at the, yeah, if we're looking at the map and you come across our little bridge.
Is that part, is that a right-of-way, or, I mean, is, it's a right-of-way, but do you own that right-of-way?
Yes, yep, we do. So, though, we have kind of a large driveway, and it kind of turns to the right where that, where the proposed location is. There was actually, if, if you look at this plan, or I guess like the map that we're looking at, there, it seems to have been a building there previously that was demolished. I, I suppose at one point, it looks like the foundation of like a garage, but that's where we're proposing to put the, because it would be very easy, accessible to our vehicles.
Okay. So technically, it's the, it is the front yard because of, yeah, the front yard is defined as the part of the house that's parallel with the street, and since Park Avenue is parallel with the side of your house, that zoning wise is the front.
The tax maps show that that's a separate parcel. Would you be able to provide your deed to the boards so that they can confirm that the right-of-way is, is actually part of your tax parcel? If it, if it is part of your tax parcel, it wouldn't be being referred to as a right-of-way, it would just be part of that lot, which is fine, that just changes the analysis, because then the front yard would be along Park Avenue rather than, what is that, 32?
Yes.
Yeah, that's definitely something I can follow up with, because I'm not entirely sure. We're talking about, like, on the maps, the part that's listed as the right-of-way, that goes through the parking lot of the insurance building.
Well, that's.
Yeah, and I just pulled up the tax map from the county as well, so that shows it actually is part of the corner lot, but sometimes the tax maps are incorrect, which is why I said if you have your deed, that should specify.
Okay, cool. That makes sense.
I, when you gave the dimensions and the pictures here, there's a picture of an overhead garage door. Is that the kind of door that's going to be on there?
No, it won't. And I was told by Castle Sheds, who provided this building information, that for this purpose of the variance and the board, this would just be demonstrating the materials that would be used to build the building, but it's actually a 10-by, so it would be a 10-by-16-foot shed with doors that open vertically, and not like a, not like a garage door. But all the materials are consistent with what's on this sheet.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Does the board have any questions, concerns? Come on, Craig.
Does it change the height of the garage based on what we provided? Does that could change something?
Oh, it, you mean the, the drawings?
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is the shed gonna be 10 foot eight, 10 foot eight inches?
Uh, 10 by 16.
I'm sorry.
Oh, the height, sorry. The, the height would be seven feet, which is, I believe that the, the seven-foot side wall would be the same as what's in this map, I believe. But honestly, that's something I should probably confirm. I, I assume that what he sent me was, you know, the gentleman from, this place that is, has the shed pre-built, said that this was like what you needed, but.
But it would have, it would have a peaked roof, I'm guessing.
Yes, it would.
So that would make, that would make it take, yeah.
Yes, so this would be, the wall would be seven feet.
Correct, yeah, that, I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the information the board was looking for, because one of the setback requirements is half the height, which the chairman said, so that was why I just wanted to make sure that if the dimensions were not accurate, the board could have that information.
But you're, you're far enough away, you're seven feet.
Understood.
Okay. No more questions? You have a beautiful house, by the way.
Thank you. It's our first house, so we're very excited.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, technically, it's front yard because of.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah.
But.
But still, you know.
Because of the fact that it's, I mean, you can't see this from the street.
No.
You can't even see it on Google Maps, really.
Yeah, I found that out. They led me to number seven at first.
We had trouble finding it when we went to the open house.
I don't see an issue.
No, I didn't ask you that. I guess we have any questions?
It's. I guess we need to wait on that right-of-way? Do we? That's a question for you, Kelly. Do we need to wait on that?
Look, 239 came in. Said local, came in.
You wouldn't be taking action tonight, so I can confirm that, but the way it's been analyzed at this point is that it is in the front yard, even if the driveway was deemed to the front yard. I confirmed with the building department, they believe where front is on this map is the front. However, should that change based on it being part of the tax map, instead of just a right-of-way, part of the lot, excuse me, instead of just a right-of-way, the shed, if you look at the map, is still located within the front yard.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
It just gives it just the different dimension.
It's a different part of the front yard, because if you're looking at it from 32 or Park.
Right, so it doesn't impact your analysis in that regard. So you should be fine. But I would like it to be clarified for your decision.
Understood. For, for the write-up of the decision.
Yes.
Famous last word, should be okay.
Why are you not choosing any?
Do I?
But no, what I, what, I'll stop.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing to the public?
They've all.
I know, I know. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wish to speak to this application? Nope. So are we gonna carry this over? We could make, we can close the public hearing? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You're not gonna build in February anyway.
That's true.
Yeah, you never know.
That's true. That's true. Shouldn't say that.
Welner.
Okay, that's good.
And there are no more public hearings.
So just to make sure, you clear with what you gotta do?
I just, sorry.
You've got to.
Provide the deed?
The deed, if, if you have any, let me know.
Yep.
Or let the building department know. If not, let them know, and I should, if, when did you purchase the house, actually?
In October, or was it October?
October, okay, so, so I only mention it because sometimes the county clerk's office is very behind at updating their website, so I may not be able to grab it offline.
If you just have to use, implement it.
Oh, okay, then it either, it either should be up, or you can get it really quick. That, that's the only thing that I was asking be provided.
And then we wouldn't, would we, after we provide that, we'll just wait for your?
Yeah, if you have it.
Okay, okay, great.
So the chairwoman will go over the procedure?
Yes, you can stay, and we'll deliberate this evening, or you can call the building department tomorrow morning. It's your choice.
I can stay, yeah, yeah, sure.
Right.
Okay, so we've got, so you want to do that?
So they're gonna deliberate, and they have.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do them first. They're here.
They're gonna review that now.
I gotta find the.
Say everything goes wonderfully based on that, they're gonna authorize the drafting of the decision. A decision won't be issued until the month's end, but sitting here, you'll be able to hear their discussions and kind of get a general feel of where you think the board is gonna go. I just wanted you to know, so. Yes, it can be intimidating, so. But the public hearing went well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Welcome to Woodbury.
Welcome to Woodbury, yes.
Oh, welcome. Awesome. Have a great night.
Night. I'm gonna have to do them first, they're easier.
Well, not only that, but it's typed. Wait a minute.
I know, it's typed.
Go.
Love it, I love it. Okay, let's look at this. Will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or create a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant says, given our lot's properties, a flag lot located off the main roads, this variance will have little impact on the character of the neighborhood, and minimal impact on nearby properties. The shed location faces the backyard of our closest neighbors, which is also separated by trees and a stream. The shed would provide more privacy to ours and our neighbors' properties. I agree.
Agreed.
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 Okay. Number two, can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variance? No, our primary residence has no garage, basement, or attic for the storage we are seeking. The proposed location of the shed gives us proximity to the driveway needed for its intended use, including access to snow blower, lawnmower, tools for car, bike storage, et cetera. I agree. I, I don't know if you guys visited the property, but.
Yeah, I drove by yesterday. It makes sense where it is.
What was that?
I drove by yesterday, and it makes sense where they want it.
Yeah, exactly.
There's no other really place in that property to put it.
Yeah. So we all agree on number two?
Yep.
We agree with the applicant. Number three, how substantial is the variance that you are requesting? The 10, the applicant says that the 10-by-16 shed would be relatively insubstantial, as it would rest upon a bed of gravel, and therefore could, could be easily removed in the future. We've also chosen a shed that complements our home and yard, and feel that it will add an aesthetically pleasing update to the space.
I agree.
Yeah, it's not a big, big thing, and, so we all agree. Number four, will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? No, the applicant says, as mentioned above, the proposed location of our shed faces the backyards of our neighbors, and is located off main roads. We have carefully chosen an aesthetically pleasing red cottage shed that complements our property and home. The shed does not propose any danger to the natural environment of the property, and would be a charming addition to the surrounding area. Yeah, I don't see any physical or, or.
No, I agree.
Effects. And the last one, is the alleged difficulty self-created? The applicant says, no, as mentioned above, our primary residence has no basement, garage, or attic. This variance will be a great help to our general needs, including storage and general upkeep of our property. Well, here we go, it's self-created. Basically, yeah, it doesn't preclude us from approving this application.
I think it's debatable if it's self-created. I mean, if, if the home has, you know.
I noticed it had no garage. The driveway ends right at the grass.
Yeah.
And it's a perfect spot for the shed, because, you know, they can take everything out that they need and.
Yeah.
You know.
And I'm sure it'll look very pretty if they decide, if this passes.
The house is very pretty.
Yeah, it is.
So, do I have a motion to have our counsel draw up a draft decision based on our discussion this evening?
If that was a motion.
No, I'm asking if there is a motion.
I will make the motion.
Well, how many times?
You should just make the motion.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have one other one to do this evening.
I guess so. He was trying to trick you into saying it again.
Yeah, I know, confused me.
No, actually, wish me to say, yes. Easy, no problem.
Okay.
All right. And now we're at Octus.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, this is the, this is the bungalow that wants to, well, they've already added a side addition in the bedroom area, because when I drove by, it was almost done. The, the framework was almost done.
Well, you're considering it as though it is nothing.
Oh, yes, I know. He even mentions the as-built new addition.
Oh, my.
I don't think they realized, yeah, yeah, there we go. So, number one, will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or create a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant says, no. The whole area will benefit from rebuilding this. Well, I don't know if the whole area will benefit. The applicant will certainly benefit, but it doesn't produce an undesirable change. Did any of you drive through there? It's, it's an interesting bungalow colony. There's lots and lots of bungalows. Looks like they have a big meeting building. I mean, it's a nice place to spend the summer. It's all wooded around there, and, yeah, it's really nice.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
I thought we were on the same thing for a minute.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking... No, we're on Actus. It's 10%. Yeah. And it's... I did all the calculations. I redid them just to see what the percentages were for some of them. You know, it wasn't... It's not a major thing. And it doesn't bring it any closer to the building next to it because it's just going to be flush with what was already there. Okay, "Set expansion of the use is not detrimental to surrounding properties or to the health, safety, and general welfare of the immediate neighborhood." I agree. It's not detrimental to the surrounding properties. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And "There's no need for an expansion of off-street parking or traffic generation that will occur in a residential district as a result of such expanded use." No. They each seem to have their own little place for parking. I'm not sure how it works there.
You tried from duplex to a single...
No, no, no. No, that's not this. No, this is other.
This is a bungalow colony.
This one's staying non-conformatory.
This is a 10% bungalow with a rear bedroom. That was Sibka.
They just want to increase the size.
They just want to add that back bedroom.
Yeah.
Did you want to change any of it?
No, it's still the same.
Okay.
It doesn't change anything. Yes.
So we're good with that? So do you need to draw up a decision for a special permit? You do?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion? That council draw up a draft decision for a special permit approving the applicant's application based on our discussion this evening? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, you have one like this very similar, maybe a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was the same. I guess they'll start with that bump out and then everybody...
I think they... Each year, they add another 10%.
We don't want this bump out. It would be similar to that based on the information provided in the board's discussions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.